Before we go to executive session, I would like to make a motion that we move number eight on the holiday tree sale and Mr. Whitey's presentation up before executive session. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Charlie Whitey, Deputy Chairman of Troop 63 Everbridge. We just celebrated 50 year anniversary.
Congratulations.
I'm still with it. This is a usual problem of what the town does for me and what I do for the town. I believe you all have a copy of it. It was done in September 17th of 2012. And we're looking for a same proposal of this for this ensuing year. I was informed today, I'd been here earlier, my tree developers are already ringing my telephone. As everybody knows, we handle all Boston Christmas trees. And we're back at the old firehouse in the grove over there. We have a little trailer. And we also have electricity instead of a generator now. And we would like to have permission to use it again this year. With the same provizoms that we had in the past about the porta potty and illumination.
I'd like to entertain a motion to grant the request, which I believe is a three-part request. It's to provide that the town provide the porta potty, $600 towards other costs, and permission to have signs that are larger than otherwise permitted on town property. So move. Second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And congratulations to you and Troop 63. It was quite a celebration.
I'd also like to introduce myself as the chairperson for Troop 63 and running it with Charlie, obviously. And my name is Susan Lee. And this is my second year chair in the tree sale. We had a very successful tree sale last year.
Thank you for joining us. It's very nice to meet you too. Thank you both.
That does get a little old. Thank you all.
We will now go into executive session, so we will ask all members of the public and the press to leave the room. For the executive session, it will be the Board of Selectmen, Tony Genovese, Jerry Shaw. And we will start with new field construction, so I would like to ask Dwight Rolland and Karen Travis to stay for that part of the executive session. Another one to the other. We need different people.
I think you said Jerry Shaw. I mean Jerry Weiner.
Oh, I said Jerry Shaw, but I mean Jerry, I mean both Jerrys and Jerry Weiner. The executive session has been ended. And in the executive session, the board discussed the new field construction, the fire dispute closeout. And it was approved by the board that, that is, the settlement as discussed in the executive session was approved by the board. And the first selectman was authorized to sign the settlement as discussed. No votes were taken in the executive session on that matter. So we need to take, make a motion now to do that?
Oh, no.
We approved it in the second session. Can we make a?
No, you didn't approve.
That's your motion.
Your motion now.
Right. So now I can motion that. That's what I had to say. Motion to approve the first electman, to authorize the first electman to approve the settlement as discussed. Okay. Is there a second? Yeah, okay. Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, the executive session, we discussed the fire commission appeal of the inland wetlands decision. No votes were taken on that matter. We will now return to our agenda. And the next item is Deputy Chief Stewart, who was just here a moment ago. He gets his staff.
There he is.
Let me skip to the other.
He's right here. He's right here.
Was that your stuff in the?
Yeah.
Stand by office on the chair. I have to sort of.
If the board, I'm going to move that we move to item 10. Second. All those in favor? So this is to authorize the first selectman to sign the agreement with the state with respect to the sidewalk maintenance. The state has paid for the sidewalk. Any discussion?
Actually, I do.
Yes, Tony?
I know, from what I read, I couldn't read anything into, there was questions going back a few times when they've come before the town, when this issue was brought up. There's slope on Lucy, actually on the other side, on the turnpike near the corner of Lucy Street. It's a pretty hefty slope. So there were questions from residents on how, what would they do with the slope? Would they put a retaining wall in to put the sidewalks there? It's a pretty hefty slope. If you think of like where Doc Martino is and keep going down the street, for a little while there, there's a hefty slope. So to put a sidewalk in, it was brought up to Professor Plattus, and he at the time said, gee, we didn't look at the slope, but yet you're right, something will happen. So there were, these residents were concerned, and I just have a question of, will there be a retaining wall put in to handle the sidewalk there as far as slope goes?
I don't know, but it didn't do with public hearing. Remember when people came and they all got their questions answered, but Lauren Connors wouldn't want to answer that. Everybody separated into groups and got all their questions answered. The specific residents who showed up, so I don't know 100% of that area.
I believe there are some slope problems.
Are still problems with tree issues.
And I'm assuming there's some retaining wall.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
But I don't know if that's a specific.
And then I'm just assuming that whoever is the property owner will then be responsible for upkeep of the sidewalk shovel.
Snow, snow.
Is there a snow or a, is there a fee or fine if they don't, I mean, what is the repercussions?
We have no evidence. We have no evidence. So they're given a certain period of time and then they face whatever.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Oh, thank you. I'm recording.
It was an if you see something, say something. So we did something. So I'll be good. Take care of it. So the first item on the agenda is the Kennet Spider use of forfeiture funds.
Correct. It's a three-wheel motorcycle. I mean, do you want me to just explain to?
I think we just.
It's a, it's a three-wheel motorcycle that we, that went into a loan program on it last year. It's a $26,000 vehicle that we're actually going to purchase it for $16,000, just a little over $16,000 this year. Last year, the only money that we had to put into it, which was when we used asset forfeiture money when we originally went into the loan program, was the $3,500 plus outfitting two of our officers with leather jackets, helmets, and communications. And we had it for a year. They offered us to buy it for $16,000. It's a good asset for us. We felt it was, it was money well spent to purchase it, and we have a lot of time and effort into it now. It's, it's a good alternative to a traffic vehicle down in the flats, when the traffic is heading in and everything like that and to get around. It's kind of like a motorcycle. And we could just go into this blindly. We had gotten approval from our work, these commissioners to look into getting a motorcycle. But there's, there's a lot of liability issues, training issues. We saw that we could purchase this vehicle. The only thing that the officer needed was a valid motorcycle driver's license. So it was no training associated with it because of the vehicle's configuration. So it wasn't a motorcycle that you needed, they'd send them away to train. The cost of having a motorcycle to send somebody to train, so as far as being cost-effective, it was a great item. So I mean, that's, I mean, that's basically where we're at with the vehicle now. And we're going to utilize that with, I mean, this has been no cost to the town. This is asset forfeiture money that we use throughout the whole project.
Entertain a motion to approve the use of forfeiture funds for the Kennet Spider purchase. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah. What do you guys use it for?
We use it for traffic now. We use it for escorts. I don't know if you've, you know, you've ever seen motorcycles.
I know where the vehicle is, but I've never seen this one in town with officers.
Oh, that's surprising.
I've seen it.
It's been used a number of times at funerals, specifically Mr. Chee's funeral, but at many other funerals.
And we've used it out of town for funerals, we use it for escorts at bloodtime. Even though the funerals here in town, all escorts from the out of town funeral.
I've seen it sitting down on Lucy Street several times. Make that right hand, turn on red, and say, oh, I'm doing it.
Drug asset forfeiture fund, what is that?
We have a fund where the town receives, the police department receives asset forfeiture funds. Ray can explain how they get those funds?
Well, it's a state program.
It's a state program where there's assets.
Basically simple. It is a state investment program. I mean, we get, we get money by having an officer in the state narcotics task force here in the southwest region. It was just part of an operation. I'm just talking off the top of my head. If they, if they're involved in a case, I think if it's outside of town, they get about 2% of the take. If they're actually the active officer that's suing the case, it could be 6 to 10%. And these are just, these are not.
That's of the value of the assets.
Of the value of the actuals.
They're found by the police department in these investigations, if they get closed or if they get.
Corr.
They sell stuff and they give it back to the communities that participate in the, in the criminal investigation.
This could be cash value, it could be vehicles. And we actually have a vehicle that was taken in asset forfeiture.
So is this separate from the state program drug assets forfeiture revolving in town?
I think that's.
That's the same one.
Same one?
Yeah.
Well, has anyone read the statute?
Yeah, we did, we did. And it's got to be connected.
I don't, I don't know if this complies. Besides that, you have to go to this commissioner of public safety for approval.
I don't know if you have to do that.
No, those aren't really the.
But you're right, Joe, it does have to have some.
Well, I have it right here.
No, no.
I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm just saying, listen, if it's a statute.
What's it say?
Expenditures from the account allocated to the Department of Public Safety and local police departments shall be authorized by a panel composed of, one, commissioner of public safety orders designated, the commander of the statewide narcotics task force orders designated, three, the president of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association orders designated.
No, I think that's for the whole program. I think that they, those, that group designates the certain, the funds to be allocated among the towns. They make the distributions. Then we have, we have, we have the money.
And then once it gets here.
We have to use it for Lawrence or put things connected with what the, in so.
So once it gets here, then, then A would apply it, so we have to use it for substance and.
That's right.
Treatment and education programs.
That's right.
Use and the detection, investigate, blah, blah, blah.
That's right.
None of which funerals and traffic control.
Well, the whole purpose of.
That's why I asked what we're using.
It's a connection that we feel is enough to satisfy the requirements and the chief and I think deputy investigated this, and you feel.
No, absolutely.
Appropriate expenditure.
We're using this vehicle to do motor vehicle stops that do associate with drug trafficking.
Correct.
That we do make arrests associated with that, so we can justify those uses. Any law enforcement. Basically, in that statute, any law enforcement use that's related or can be related to drug activity, or even drug education, you can use those funds for. You can, you can, it's, it's very broad, but then again, it's very restrictive to who has the entitlement to that money, who says how it's being used. And it's both that, and that goes directly back to the police.
So Deputy Stewart, in the end, do you have to report, we use this much money for this spider or whatever you use the money for?
We have an annual report.
And do they typically give you some kind of feedback as to, you know, or questions as, well, why did that, did you use money for that? And is that a typical, like a back and forth?
Absolutely. We just, we just send them a four year.
Every year.
Great.
And it's sent to the partner of justice. It's, it's got the interest bearing, it's got the beginning balance. You report the interests, you report the categories of expenditures, whether it's protective measures, whether it's training, there's a few categories you have to report, and then any balance.
So I'm assuming you've used vehicles or other expenditures in this account before that have passed through without a problem?
Oh, absolutely. Matter of fact, I took one of the items off it, off it, just because I felt it wasn't, it was for maintenance for a particular vehicle, that, that when we really come down to it, maintenance is a budgetary item. And you can't surplan any type of my budget with this type of money either.
All this gets run by the police commission. I mean, you're here.
Oh, absolutely.
The police commissions review this, they run through their process, correct?
Actually, this process started with Mr. Sheehy and through Tony, and said, we have a considerable amount of money, I said, and we said, we have to come up with some, some type of guidelines. Anything over $1,000 up to $5,000, I go through Tony. Anything over $5,000, I have to change out. But it's just letting you know what we're using the money for, and that we agree that it is proper use for asset forfeiture.
I would like, I just, I believe under the statute, to Deputy Stewart's point, we don't actually have control over those funds or even the authority to approve or not approve it. But our town has worked out a very good system where we're kept informed and.
That's correct.
We count on the leadership of the police department to assure us that it is a proper use connected to the statutory purposes, and we do rely on him for that.
It's just being transparent, and you'll see that.
And we appreciate getting, getting the reports. Okay, well, the motion.
We need to run it. We don't know.
We really don't.
Didn't someone make a motion?
Yeah, we did, we did.
Let's move the motion.
Okay. So we have, we have moved to approve it, although statutorily not required, it does recognize that you've come to us and presented the information and we've heard it. All those in favor? Aye. opposed?
Vehicle. Vehicle purchases. The reason I'm here tonight regarding the vehicle purchases is that I would like to get a motion that indicates that I do not have to go out to bid for the vehicles over the past several years. And the last time we actually went out to bid, it was going to be a little trip, last time we actually went out to bid was in 1998. The town went out to bid for police cars. We did in fact go with the Stevens Ford, who actually won the bid, because it's state vehicles. Those were Crown Victorias. But this year, I'm coming, you've got, you've got a list of two cars there. I had budgeted for $30,000 each for children's cars. I hope you understand that, and some of you that are new to the board, is that we're kind of in a transitional stage right now with the vehicles that we're buying. Back in 2011, they no longer make the Crown Victoria. All right? So with replacing the Crown Victoria with a Ford police interceptor, and when we, last year, we bought two SUVs, all wheel drive vehicles. They're frisk related, branded, they're six cylinder vehicles, they're, you know, gas efficient. I researched the Chrysler, the Ford sedan, the Chevy sedan, the Caprice. It's a consensus, most of our officers that they like to, and most departments in the area are going to these SUVs. Like I said, all wheel drive vehicles to handle all the equipment that we carry in our vehicles. A lot of departments don't do what we do in this town. We're not first responders. I can show you a list of the equipment that the officers keep in their cars, as well as the equipment that are in these cars today, but they have to do their jobs. It's comfort wise, space wise, we have big officers, they're able to put the seat back and still have legroom in the vehicles that were purchased. But the two vehicles are associated with a, and the quotes that you get shows you a start bid price. MHQ was on the state bid, and I believe it's $26,000 and change. All those add up to all new stuff that we have to buy, all right, that I did not technically budget for. So I'm going to be utilizing asset forfeiture money in this excessive. Well, the two cars are going to cost 6,000, or $68,633.36. So $8,633 of that money is going to come on asset forfeiture. But this is just a proper, properly outfitment with the new equipment. Because you have to understand, this is a whole new concept in, in police vehicles that started two years ago. And these last two years, I've tried to, you know, tried to make it a little easier for the town and not fully budget. I could have come in, I could have budgeted for $35,000 for each car. And it just said, I don't, I'm not at a point right now where I know exactly how much to budget for. Does that make sense?
These are, these are in this year's budget.
They're in this year's budget.
A and B, they're coming on state bid.
And they're going to, I'm going to purchase them on the state bid. I don't want to have to go out.
The action part of the board is to approve going by, going by state bid. Is there a motion to approve use of the state bid that's purchased? I'll make that motion. Second. Any discussion or questions?
There's asset, asset front money being used for this?
Correct.
Lights and sirens.
Lights and sirens and accessories.
Right.
Well, a lot of the, the overhead lights are, I don't know what purchase does. It's, if you, if, I would have to sit down and explain to you that whole list of extras and, it's just, it's just the way that the vehicle has to have these lights on the side. The light bars I bought in years past. But it's, it's a difficult process right now because, you know, we're moving into another, you know, different police cars. Just not the Crown Victoria.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. opposed? At an earlier meeting, I had reported to the board that I attended a meeting of our emergency preparedness team. Ray was the leader of that team, and it was the center of the board that they'd like an update on it. Ray, maybe you can just give us a quick overview of who participates and what the teams have done.
Well, we participate. I said, we're a town. We're, we're, most of the town officials here are the department heads. In the last several years, I made sure that they've got what they call an in-stream, national incident management training for department heads, fire chiefs, police chiefs, but you're, you know, everybody from the first selectman all the way down to, you know, to finance or whatever. I am the assistant emergency management director for the town. The chief of police is actually the emergency management director. I guess what our responsibility is to, and we do it right here, which, over the past several years, in order to, the large events that we have, we do it right. When we first met, when we first gave this first selectman, we got everybody together and everything like that. And the town decides that's the most important thing to do, is to get everybody together. You know, have a checkoff list, which we do. I don't know if it's necessary to run through that, but, but we want to have that unified fight command between town, all, police, fire, public works, union services, because of our showroom, EMS, and any of the other key leaders. What I've tried to do is I've tried to bring in the outside key leaders. Three healthcare facilities, our bus assistance during town. The MB is primarily the bus. We have agreements with them, the buses, we need in the emergency situation. We have all our evacuation information in place. I think we look pretty good. I have a pretty good handle on it, and the chief like kind of gives me free rein with it because I actually work very closely with the regional emergency planning team, steering committee. I'm chair of the public safety side. So for, for 30 towns in your region, I'm a chair for the emergency and public safety side. I also sit on the emergency management team for the region and the, not that I don't want to get Tony's job, but I'm the financial chief for that. I got called out for standing hook for our regions. This board is actually, the later board has actually given me permission. I have my call, you know, 24 hours basically to go anywhere. It could be out of state, but the town has given me permission for me to. I'm actually going to be going, all expenses paid in Texas in December to go with what they call TEES training. They said the University of Texas A&amp;M, they have a disaster center out there, they, they put people in training. This is where all, I mean, you have the fires out in California, and this is all your command staff go through the training. So I, I think town-wise, we're doing very well. We have a very good relationship with our UI. We have a very good relationship with our regional authority. Those are our two main concerns, all right? Flooding, West River, all right? Even when Irene came through here, that was our main concern until we got to the point where we knew that there wasn't that real flooding. But, but we were on the phone, you know, weeks before, I mean, as soon as we know that there's going to be a hurricane or on, on, on board with that with the regional authority, because that is an issue down there because they can literally be, you know, we won't be able to get to them. And then obviously, power here in town, UI. I think we've got, we've got a great liaison, Vidal Zaral, and our partnership with UI couldn't be better. We do have a partnership with a, with the other utility connected like power, but we only have like, I believe we have 13 customers, and they're all on Morse Road, and they're all the last to get their power back because they're at the bottom of the grid. So, but they never complain. They all have generators up there, and they're somewhat self-sufficient, but we know they're there. So when they're asking questions, our main concern and Vidal Zaral, he'll be on day one, he'll be writing that EOC. Our EOC is at the police department. We'll, you know, we hook up with the state. Matter of fact, we do have a program that we're trying to put together right now, it's called VOC. Our region bought it for the next two years. It's a management tool. I wish I had it so I could show it to you tonight, but I, my, my command staff is taking training. I've offered to other department heads. My intention is to get laptops for each of the department heads so they'll be able to basically visualize what's going on. So if we have an I P N or a Sandy or anything like that, and 95% of the town's out, that I could actually push you on the system, and Beth, you know exactly what people are out, because we'll have the whole list, even though what roads are closed and everything like. No, I know that was a big concern for you.
Yeah.
But I know a lot of you want a lot of that information. This is, but, you know, you know, I'm not saying you bother me. You never bother me if you want to call and ask a question, even during some heated things. Please, never hesitate to do that. But this system will give you that, that ability to get into this, to get into this system, just to view it, which you'll be able to see. How many, I mean, as, as selectman in the town, how many roads are out? You know, we have the Everbridge system, and I gave you the information to you about that. I mean, you have to understand, and that's our notification system here in town, that we do it during emergencies through the state police, but it takes your, it's your landline at home, your yellow pages, and anything that you go on to CT Alert and notify that you want to be notified either by your, you know, maybe on your smartphone, or your iPad, or your computer at home. But you have to have power for some of those things, and you may not get it. I think, I mean, we have, actually, there's a listing of just over 3,000 in town that Everbridge can reach out to, and usually we get a response of maybe 400 or 500. Because like during, during Irene, you know, some people had power out, they didn't have telephone, so they weren't getting the message. So I mean, I think we look, as a town, I'm really happy knowing how some of the other towns struggle.
Thank you.
Next question. Didn't you also the liaison for Southern Connecticut Gas, now that we have natural gas in town?
No.
So that we have a separate.
We'll have somebody, we'll have a separate for that. And I have contact numbers for that. I just don't work as closely with them. I, I mean, during the storm, I mean, there's a lot of people to contact. You know, it's, 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 it's Tennessee gas too, it comes through town. So we made contacts with all, initial contacts.
But our municipal campus is all based on.
The new system that just came in.
So, right. That's important, right?
Joe actually probably has the contact.
Same gentleman that handled it.
Uh huh, okay.
And that's the purpose for that. Three days out, if we were going to have a storm, you know, they're planning on being, coming in, you know, say Sunday, we would be meeting tomorrow, and we would be going down that checklist, making sure that everybody has been contacted, everybody's been set up, you know, we've done it in the past, it works great, everybody's on the same page. And, and, I mean, rest assured, maybe you not being, you know, woke up in the middle And, and, I mean, rest assured, maybe you not being, you know, woke up in the middle of the night and saying that your street's without power, I mean, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're pretty efficient here. I'm, I'm even pretty happy the way the town works.
Anything else?
Actually, Deputy Stewart, I have a couple of questions going back to the vehicles. It wasn't about the motion to approve the vehicles. However, I came to the police commission meeting the other night and you probably remember talking about this, and you said something interesting. Can you tell the board what happens, you're getting two new vehicles. What happens to the two older vehicles that you were replacing and typically what you do with them and what sometimes you do with other town agencies?
All right. The mistake I used to make in the past is that I never budgeted for those vehicles. So when I was under the assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, I says, when I would have to, I would get, I would get approached by, it's usually, it's either public works facilities or it's human services. They both utilize a vehicle. Human services utilizes a vehicle because they can't bring the buses up on the parkway and when they have to transport, you know, elderly, either to Hammond or someplace like that, they have to use a van. So they, I think, I think it was about five years ago, they came to me to ask me, ask me for the first vehicle. Well, I never, I never really budgeted for it, but I can get between six fifty and I know Derby just got nineteen hundred for one of their vehicles. So I just assumed that I was, I would have that one, you know, but I never budgeted not having. And that became a problem these past, these past two years, that I, I came up short because...
Well, just to whack you up a minute. So in other words, he gifts the old cars to the other agencies. He doesn't get any money for them.
Correct.
On cars he could sell and would sell if the other town agencies didn't want them, but he's actually gifting them, right? And not getting anything back to his budget because he didn't?
He told me to make an update if that was the case.
Yeah. He does, we do give them to the other, the other department in an effort to reuse as many police vehicles as we can, so we don't have to purchase new cars. In the event that there's a shortfall in the raised vehicle account, then the, through the budget process, we make up for that shortfall. It's, it's all comes from the same pile.
A special allocation or something?
So it was more a mistake on my side.
Yeah, if he budgets for it. Or he'll budget an extra two thousand dollars if he knows he has to give one to Mary Ellen.
Right. So if he budgets for it, it's fine. And if he doesn't, we have to make a special allocation so he doesn't lose money out of his budget.
Correct. We make sure he can get what he needs for, for his, for his vehicles.
Yeah. And I'll bring that, this year, I'll bring it to your attention. Mary Ellen was asking for another question.
Right, so we will plan for that for next year, so his budget may be a little higher goes like that.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, thank you.
We are now at director of finance and administration.
Thank you. So I have the preliminary year-end results for you. These are unorganized results, which means I still have a series of year-end adjustments to make to reflect some year-end activity that we typically do adjustments for. But so, so far, we have a projected shortfall, and I wanna make sure that everyone's clear on this. There is an actual shortfall, when I say actual, I mean a actual, we have a shortfall of two ninety-nine, four forty-four. That's an actual shortfall of revenue that we've spent more than we took in. Okay? So that's two ninety-nine, four forty-four. However, we do have a budgetary surplus of a hundred thousand, five fifty-six. What that means is we had budgeted to use four hundred thousand dollars of our fund balance and we used three hundred of it. So really, from a budgetary, and it's laid out nicely on the schedule attached, which we can go through, but from a budgetary perspective, we were a hundred thousand dollars ahead of where we had budgeted. But from an actual, actual cash perspective, actual money in the bank, we were three hundred thousand dollars less. Does that make sense?
So we thought we were gonna be four hundred thousand dollars short, but we?
But we were three hundred thousand dollars short. Correct. That's absolutely correct. That's a good way to state it. So to, to sort of highlight where some of those adjustments are, some of the, I try to go over some of the larger, I usually cover all the revenue and then expenditures. I try to think of larger negatives or positives.
Tony, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Just so that everyone is clear, the four hundred thousand dollar allocation from the fund balance is an annual?
That's correct. And that's a discussion that this board will have and has every year about whether it's three hundred, whether it's five hundred, whether it's two hundred, whether it's eight hundred. And there's pros and cons, there's of each. And we try to keep a seven, the general ratio is seven, eight percent to fourteen percent of your budget is where your fund balance should be. So we're about ten percent, which is sort of in the middle.
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted everyone to understand.
Sure. So, and, and in the revenues, we had a surplus of a hundred seventy thousand dollars in taxes. That was mainly due to some large back tax collections that we had towards the end of the year. The intergovernmental revenue is pretty much on budget. There was a slight shortfall of about twenty-three thousand dollars, mostly due to some minor cuts and some pilot grants that the state had done in, in the town, really nothing significant, but some minor adjustments there. Department charges is a, a shortfall of four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. Of course, the main reason for that is golf runs are short, five hundred and seven thousand dollars. So that's in department charges because that's where all of our charges, all of our revenues from departments that charge for services are. So offset, that was offset slightly by a fifteen thousand dollar surplus in the transfer station and a nine thousand dollar surplus in building permits. So those are the three major department charge adjustments that we had, which results in the four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar deficit. Interest income continues to run. I think we had probably overly optimistic, we anticipated that the rates would be higher. Just for those of you who, you heard earlier about how our rates to borrow are a lot lower. I mean, they used to be, for those, they would typically be two, three percent. When we, I used to do this six years ago, down to a quarter of a percent. So on the flip side of that, it is our interest income, which at one point was seven hundred thousand dollars that I bought it. And now it's fifty, we can make that worth twenty-five thousand dollars. So you can see it's got an impact on both sides of the ledger and that's where we are with that. On expenses, the country club had a surplus of sixty-eight thousand dollars in expenditures, mostly savings and payroll and benefit, some other slight savings and some other accounts, but that's where most of it was. And so then if you net the two, the five oh seven and the revenue shortfall and the surplus of sixty-eight, that's where you get the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Right. Police department has an anticipated surplus of about forty-one thousand dollars. There was a vacant position in the air throughout the, earlier in the year, which contributed to that. Waste management is a surplus of sixty-three thousand dollars, mainly due to reduced tonnage of bulky waste, solid waste, recycling. So we didn't take in as much tonnage as we had budgeted for. Human services and recreation both have some surpluses in some part-time wage accounts. Oftentimes, if there are programs that don't require quite as much staff or there's any vacant position or somebody leaves, there's some gaps and when those positions aren't filled. And those, both those departments are very careful about just using the part-time staff that they need. Woodbridge Ward event is reporting a surplus of forty-five, one thirty-two in its latest report on the June thirtieth. Finally, as we've discussed, there's a surplus in Hammond of eighty-five thousand. So in total of that, on the next chart, you can see how it lays out where the surpluses or deficits in the case of revenues and all the surplus in expenditures lays out nicely to an excess of revenue over expenditures in the far right column of a hundred thousand dollars. You can follow that down the, down the sheet. And then you have the designation for fund balance, which is clearly our own revenue, so we don't record it as such because it's our own already in the bank, so to speak. So that leaves you with a deficit of two ninety-nine, four forty-four. So that then gives you a, aside fund balance of four point six million dollars, which is ten percent of our budget. So you get this, it's a different, slightly different form when it's a projection every month as a tool to help you manage your finances.
Any questions?
Just one moment. I did some quick arithmetic. That two ninety-nine figure, Tony, is about two-thirds of one percent.
The departments are very good about, you know, spending what they have to spend, that they're spending their budgets.
Actually, in fairness, almost every single one of them had a surplus, except for the golfers.
We worked, we worked very hard throughout the years to create an atmosphere where departments don't feel that they need to spend every penny of their, it took a while to change that culture when I first got here, but it's, it's now, I think all the departments are very good about it. Okay. Let's look at the tech report. Yep. Okay. Does it memo the pack Crisco? You should have the package.
There's another one that came in. CEO, she broke one at the last minute. She was two of them. Did you get all the sheets that I gave you, Tony? The orange dividers?
Yeah, I'm gonna go with, I just have this, this one that was in the package.
The one that we had in the package was very thick and then there was another one that was?
Yes, the numbers on the front are the same. But you just have to?
Yeah, I have it here. Oh, yeah, I got this. Okay, so I think, we'll do them separately. So there's no confusion?
Sure.
Okay. So the first was, there's real estate refunds totaling three hundred and nineteen, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. Motor vehicle refunds totaling nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and eleven cents. Our total refunds for August of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents.
There's a new total?
Right. There's a, so then there's a separate one here.
She has a more step down, so it was from nine seventy-two to point eight point three.
Right. Then there's an additional motor vehicle refund of thirty-one dollars and seven cents.
Right.
Do you want to just take them all at the same time? And then the new total is twenty-three thousand, seven twenty-eight, twenty-seven cents.
So is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep, you're good.
Funding requests?
We have, we have one. And it was discussed earlier, it's the hose.
Wait, I don't, I don't have a packet.
Okay, I'll have to see.
You see? Oh, well, you can have my, I think you can. It was under, it was under the fire chief's report. Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, that's angry, so no problem. This is funding request thirteen, fourteen, dash, zero, four, in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the replacement of LDH, which is large diameter hose. It's fire hose which failed in recent inspection. We had this discussion with the fire chief earlier this evening. Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved. Second? No seconded? Any discussion?
Just, I just wanted to be clear, the form itself doesn't acknowledge that the fifteen, one ninety-eight, seventy is the balance of the forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollar figure, but the attachment has that, so?
Yeah, that's correct.
So as long as these always stay together?
They always do, yep.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor? You want to close? Thank you.
Town chief's in? Yep. So we had, in our budget last year for this year, for to replace the town jeep for the building officials. And we ran out the bid for that, which is a two thousand jeep for any of that ass. And we received one bid. So sometimes when we go out the bid, we receive, we receive a lot of bids. For instance, we go out to, today we opened bids, which you'll get in your next meeting hopefully, we opened bids for the Mary Ellen Bridge. We received ten bids. So a lot, a lot of bidders are there today. We opened up bids for jeep, we received one bid. But we've done some research and feel it's a fair price, so we'd like to recommend more to get to Milford Auto Group. And there's a trade-in of twenty-three hundred dollars for the old jeep.
Is there a motion to accept the bid?
Some would.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you.
I do have one other, yes. So I do have one other, to get you earlier, I would do a, just a quick report on the animal control. So we do have a part-time animal control officer assisting us as one of our employees is on leave. So she is from a neighboring community. She works twenty to twenty-five hours per week. And actually, you have to actually appoint her at your next meeting as an official appoint, appointing ACI. But she has been working us, on us on a temporary basis. We have currently six cats and four dogs, which would be ten animals currently in the shelter. And we placed twelve in August so far. In August, there's been about eighty-four, eighty-four, eighty-five calls. Sixty-four of them were physical calls to a location. The other calls were telephone calls that were, resulted in an action of some sort. So the sixty-four physical calls were probably split. Twenty percent in Bethany and the rest split between Derby and Woodbridge. And there's been a hundred and thirty-five visitors to the facility this month. So that's sort of a full traffic into the facility. We're working to improve the facility, its, its condition and have the facility become part of our six-year capital plan, as all our other facilities are, so that we can properly take care of the facility as a town asset, whether it be roofs or, or siding or whatever. You'll, you'll be able to hear that information and decide how you wanna incorporate funds for that. We are keeping an eye on overtime and other, other items and if it becomes an issue, we feel you need to address with L A.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions? Great, thank you very much.
Interesting.
We have minutes to approve. First are the minutes of the April tenth meeting, so I need to?
Tell us, tell us.
I'm sorry, I told Jerry, I'm sorry.
Jerry, that's okay.
You're gonna be at the minutes of the second. She wants to go home.
Not the old one.
Very, very quick. The only thing I wanted to put on the agenda is this AT&T Universe Public Access Channel. And it's been a while, the board, I don't know who is this board, the prior board?
Who's prior board?
Prior board.
Approved.
Approved the town entering into a contract with AT&T so that all its Universe subscribers, so those are the little boxes you see with the green dots on it in town, people have signed up for that service, will be able to get public access TV. Right now they can't. We, the board unanimously approved us entering into the agreement. I received a draft agreement from AT&T three months ago. I made two very minor changes. I've seen the guy who is in charge of this a couple of times and he said he's waiting for his town, his, his general counsel to get back to him to approve the minor changes. I talked to him last night as I was leaving my office. He said he hasn't heard back from the guy who called me. I would suspect, and Ellen already has the authority to, to sign the agreement, I just wanna bring you up to date that I expect by the next meeting, we will have that agreement signed and that will be available to all AT&T Universe subscribers.
Which I think is very few in the town, is what he said, right?
I think they have more.
They're trying to make a market or something?
Yeah, because if you see there are any more boxes up there with those green dots, so they've increased their, their territory in the town, so maybe they were more.
Well, now I know that the boxes with the green dots.
That's what I have. So if you open one, you're screwed, you're eligible for AT&T.
Yeah. Thank you, Jerry.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
I know, I thought they were somebody's fine.
The NSA guys were. Okay, minutes. First are the minutes of April tenth, two thousand thirteen. We have three board members who were present at that time. So is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? No, they're hard to read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? And do we need to abstain or?
Yes.
Yeah. All those abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. May eighth, so maybe is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hmm, dumb thing. You seven of seven. Mr. Cannonback, no able to attend the meeting? I'd say not. What's the matter? They're great. Yeah, we'll take their, yeah, I'm gonna tell you. Should've called you back and I just got sidetracked. So, we're all getting some favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, meeting of June 26th. We were all part of that meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Second? Any questions or corrections?
One thing on page 11. Didn't you put my name is Helen instead of Beth?
Oh, did I do that again? It's cute.
I'm sorry.
I could be either one of them next. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. July 10th, 2013, is there a- Can we keep going? A motion to, is there a motion to approve the-
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have two resignations from boards and commissions. I believe we discussed this last time that technically we probably don't have to accept resignations, but it has been the practice. So, I am moved that we accept the resignation of Alan Rice as an ultimate member of the Woodbridge Town Plan and Zoning Commission. So moved with regret. Second?
With more regret.
Okay. Deep regret. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the resignation from Andy Esposito from the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission. Is there a motion to so moved with regret? Any second? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Partly capo of the board and the town, I would like to thank Alan Rice and Andy Esposito for their service on the board. We really appreciate it and they put in many, many long hours. Appointments. Investment Committee is on the agenda. However, I've looked at the ordinance and everyone on the Investment Committee continues until we replace them if we choose to. So, I'd like to not take this up tonight. And then we will poll the members who are probably on the committee and see who wants to continue, who doesn't. I will let everyone know and then we can take up replacements if needed. Thank you. Now, there from, we'll look at appointments. Zoning Board of Appeals alternate, is there a nominee?
I have a nomination. I'd like to nominate Cynthia Gibbons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussions? Town Plan and Zoning Commission alternate? Alternate, sorry.
I'd like to nominate Jerry D. Mullin, please.
Give it a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other nominees for Town Plan and Zoning Commission alternate? Country Club of Woodbridge Commission?
I have a nominee, Jeff. Both those resumes were in all three of them in the package of the nominees.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension?
Abstain.
Any other nominees?
Well, I'd like to look forward Spencer Rubig.
I'm sorry, I-
Spencer.
I should've asked you that before we voted. I apologize.
That's why, you did last, so that's why I skipped it last time. It's okay.
The position's been filled, we understand the nomination. Greater New Hager Transit District. There was a proposal to ratify the recommendation from the Human Services Commission. And we have that panel, you guys kept up to me, I guess. I just got it this evening. And the Board of Human Services Commission passed a motion unanimously approving Sharon Bender as the representative and Harry Destilio as the alternate and the Greater New Hager Transit Board of Directors. So, I would like to nominate all of them, I can do them together. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, each of these women has been serving in these positions. Continuation.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First, let me, boy, I did just want to follow up on a couple of things. We had a request for a future building committee update. And what we have scheduled, a thorough update from the Building Committee before a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Fighters together with the Board of Education invited. That will be on Tuesday, September 17th. In addition to that and prior to that time, at our next meeting on September 11th, we will have just a big picture overview about what the project is, how we got to this point. So, because there'll be a lot of information on the 17th. And for those of us who are new board members, I think there's a lot of background information that will be helpful to us and I think some reminders to the board members who have been here. It's a topic with a lot of information that we'll be getting. And we will be getting documentation before the meeting on the 17th. So, I want to let you know about that. On the micro grid, we are working to gather information on the next steps. Tony and Joe are going to be going to a state briefing by deep on one of the best ways to proceed on that. So, I want to let you know about that. And on Country Club of Woodbridge on the Special At-Hat Committee, the membership is just about finalized. I'll be working on a draft charge to the committee and I will distribute to the board for comments before the next meeting. So, that's the update. And I would now want to, I'm going to jump.
I'll pass, ma'am. You covered it on the other with the, with the meeting that Tony and I- It is progressing. I will just say that we'll have to understand that this is a long-term process on this micro grid. It's going to take a couple of years for when we're done it until it gets put into service.
It won't take us two years to know what the total impact of the town is, I would like, because there's, you know, you got a grant, but there's town funds that have to be spent.
Yeah, no, it'll not take two years for that, sir. What it will take two years to get all the equipment. Some of the equipment the chapter 11 is not available until we get a purchase order and then 12 to 15 months later.
We haven't approved going forward with the micro grid as before, I guess.
Right, we have to gather information.
If you don't have information, we'd like, in order for you to make a decision.
Right, right, right.
That's it. Sorry, that's it.
It's on the reports. Joe?
Yep. No, I'm not.
Tony?
Uh, yeah, I actually have a few things. And as far as conservation, I was there. They had some interesting discussions. There is a few subjects and maybe we could talk about one of them further, which is funding and votes and having quorum and phone procedures over the phone. And what rooms they can do that and still be recorded. Could they use possible recording such as Skype, which is video conferencing? I think this is the only room that is set up for that kind of recording as far as live. But they also kind of need a home because they were meeting here during the times that I believe the Finance Commission was here. And so, they're going to be, they're looking to where their meetings might be. And that also might affect us having a conversation about how can they confirm for video conferencing and can they view a court. Also, conservation, there was a letter written requesting me, well, they requested me to bring the letter asking our first selectmen to request signage for the Masaro Farm. And I will present that to you. As far as recreation goes, there was a lot of discussions about what's happening currently with the fields. They are starting to have a bigger issue with the overgrowth and maybe have to revisit. There's going to be a conversation with Adam about the use of pesticides and how that's working out and what kind of work that's starting to cause to try to maintain the fields. Also, there was some questions asked about the use of the fire, the old firehouse and when that might become available. I did have some discussions with a few people. It seems though there is a, many things in the old firehouse that maybe could be moved to other places, either for storage or for other purposes. The Commission wants to know if there's any progress on being able to start renovating that or if there'd be any talk on when they can start to clean it out or- They do have some, it looks like the recreation has about one bay full of some of their materials. So, that's, those are really the two major takeaways.
Thank you. I couldn't make the Special Town Planning and Zoning Meetings because it was a funny night. But just a quick, quick update. They did approve a sign for Brookside Farm Market. This is, yeah, they also approved the millinering company's permission to relocate from 7th Sullivan to 175 Main Avenue Road. Do you guess it's somewhere near Crest or something?
They're moving to the Quik Blue.
Yep, right across the street.
Facility on the Crest property. Okay. And then because just, I just brought this up because we talked about at an investments meeting, the Commission unanimously approved a motion to schedule a public hearing so the Town Planning and Zoning Commission can consider amendment to its plan of conservation development to improve participation by Woodbridge in the community farms preservation program. So, that did get there. And their next meeting, they don't meet in August, the next meeting is Sunday, Tuesday, and I will be at that one. I did go to the Fire Commission meeting. They didn't meet in July, but I did attend the August 12th meeting. They reelected, well, I guess they're all re-elected. Aliyah Lexiatis is chair, Mike Horton is vice chair, and Mike Supreen is secretary. We went over the budget, discussed the codes, which I'm not going to bring up again. We'll revisit it or revisit that. The Commission voted to approve moving the office of fire marshal from the town hall to the firehouse in the work better logistically, especially because the administrative secretary is located there. And Chief Roland reported that fire personnel went to Baltimore Fire Expo and took forty classes and the department is conducting the EMT refresher force for all members. And the next meeting for them is Monday, September 9th. Which I will probably get to as well. Thank you.
Anything I would say was covered by the presentations tonight. Except I just want to tell you that the Monday night at the Fire Commission meeting, there was an outing going on while we were all there. And these people were having a very good time. And the parking lot was packed. So, that was a very nice city. Thank you.
The Amity Board of Ed met on the 12th. Interim Superintendent Mike Mast was formally welcomed for his third tour of duty. Nice, nice resource, nice resource to have available. And he's been working since June, of course, but he was formally welcomed out of the board that evening. The baseball team, the state championship baseball team was celebrated that night at the meeting. There was some discussion of the teacher evaluation system, which is in the works. And there will be more on that as, as it evolves. And as Tony mentioned in his report, the Amity Board of Ed ran a surplus for FY13. The board voted to appropriate a portion of that surplus for an air handling system, a new air handling system in the district office portion of the building. But there will be a balance of that surplus. And the early estimate is that the Woodbridge portion of that balance, which will be returned to the town, is somewhere in that $85,000, $85,000 to $90,000.
Is that what you were reporting?
Yeah. I just was, just was saying that.
And I was out of town and unable to attend the Woodbridge Board of Education meeting last Monday night. Dr. Stull was here. Good highlights from that.
Thank you, Lawrence. Any additions to your agenda? Motion for adjournment? Second? All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Thanks again.